Thank you all. If I could have the roll call, please.
Peggy Bossy.
Here.
Paul Godwin.
Here.
Chris Euster.
Here.
Karen Callens.
Here.
Dan Downey.
Here.
This meeting is a meeting of the Deer Park Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Due to the COVID-19 national pandemic, community input is being suspended for this meeting. However, public announcements will be accepted via the email link.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
Sure.
Second.
All those in favor of approving tonight's meeting agenda, please signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to district recognitions and donations.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Bossy. We have several recognitions and a donation this evening. I want to first start with the Marching Wildcats recognition. The board would like to recognize the Deer Park Marching Wildcats for an abbreviated, but albeit successful band season and express our sincere appreciation to everyone's dedication and flexibility. Special thank you to Patrick Bauer for keeping the Marching Wildcats tradition going strong despite the circumstances of an unusual season. Actually, we actually have Mr. Bauer with us this evening, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bauer at this time.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Pat.
Patrick, good evening.
Good evening. So, one of the, I always try to look at the positives out of these situations, and one of the things this year, and I'm sure Jay is really happy about this too, is I counted up all the times I had to call Jay over from March through the summer, and it was like 12 different separate occasions. Sometimes it was as simple as, are we allowed to use water bottles at band camp? Can you call the health department to, hey, we got a problem with Disney? So, literally eight o'clock, nine o'clock at night. So, I appreciate his help, Mr. Hartley's help, and everybody here.
Mr. Bauer?
Yes.
By my recollection, it was like 12 times in one day.
There, yeah, there was a few.
Just wanted to clarify.
This was my first pandemic, I'm sorry. I'll write to NKU and tell them I was not prepared for it. So, anyway, speaking of all this stuff, you know, obviously, we all know that we're all going through this, and it was no different for our band program. Many, many, many sleepless nights, trying to think about, you know, are we doing everything we possibly can to make sure that there still is a Deer Park band after this is over? And so, that's been my biggest fear. Right at the beginning of the pandemic, some of you know this, some of you don't, but I was elected to be the president of District 14 for OMA. And so, what that did for me personally was it allowed me insight into a bunch of different programs all across the state. And my biggest fear immediately when this all started was is that there's going to be 1,000 to 2,000 band programs across the United States that don't survive the pandemic. And of course, my goal and number one priority was to make sure that Deer Park was not one of them. So, I think, I think we're going to be fine. It all started back at band camp on that first, the very first day of band camp. Basically, every band competition in the United States was canceled in one day. And that was really tough news for our kids. They're all about the competitive nature of what we do. And when that news came down, it really, it was kind of the beginning of what we had to do as far as changing our thought process, our mentality for what was going to be our season. So, normally, right now, I'd be up here talking about the 25 to 30 trophies that we won this fall and our 28th consecutive state run and all of that good stuff. But, you know, like I said, there's always positives that come out of these kind of situations. And, you know, we were able to perform at three football games. We were able to go to a band, what I called a band festival up at Mason. We were the first band in the state of Ohio this year to actually go to a competition and perform. And I know that because there was only two band competitions, and ours was the weekend before the other one, and we went on first. So, out of, out of the state of Ohio, there was about, there was about 22 bands that performed, and we were the first one in the entire season. So, that was really cool. And it was, there was no trophies, there was no rankings. They basically said, whatever you got to come, whatever you got, come and perform. And we were like, let's go do it. It's right up the street. And it was great. It got our rookies out of the band room. They got to see the process of how to put the show together, because that was my biggest fear. There's going to be a lot of bands that we compete against next fall, hopefully, where half of their band has never competed, never marched, never played on a field. And that was, you know, I said, if we can just get through the year and teach our rookies how to do this on any level, we're going to be ahead of the game for next year. And we were, we did that. We far exceeded that. You know, so that is a testament to not only our kids in the band, but to our administration, to the parents. You know, there was a lot of, there's a lot of rules in place that aren't normally there. And when you're moving a band of 80 kids around, it's a lot different than like moving the basketball team around from place to place. It is, there's a lot to think of. The rules alone for our parents to buy tickets just to go to Mason was crazy. So, I appreciated all of the dedication and hard work that all of those people put into this stuff. Moving forward, I, like I said, I think we're going to be just fine. And this was a good reminder for me personally about why all of us got into education. And it was not to win trophies, and it's not to go to state, and it's not to, you know, it's not to garner as much scholarship money as possible. I told somebody this year that, that our biggest, that my biggest reminder about why we do this was on Wednesday nights when we had band practice. And for like two hours, I felt like a normal person again. And, and we measured this year's success by the smiles. You know, there was smiles at the end of practice. The kids, you could tell, like they would come to the practice and they were all tired of wearing masks, and they were all beat down from all the rules and everything that's in place to protect ourselves. And they just got to do band again and just be kids for a few minutes. And, you know, we measured our success in smiles, and we measured our success in actual musical improvement without worrying about all the other stuff. So, it was a great, refreshing reminder about why we all got into education to begin with. So, Deer Park is a strong community. It's an incredibly strong community for the performing arts. And we all know the performing arts has been hit pretty hard by this stuff on every level. We just had John Morris Russell win the other day to talk to the band about some of this stuff. And, you know, they're going through the same exact things we are. And, and it was kind of nice for the kids to hear that a little bit. And he was very positive about the future with the kids as well. And I think it kind of, it kind of helped a few of us to kind of realize, you know, this is all going to be okay quicker than we think. So, anyway, that's all I have. It was a great season. We had a lot of fun. I, like I said, I think the reminder for me was, there was a reminder there about why I got in the band to begin with, because it's fun. It gets us out of the worry of paying bills and all that stuff and just to go and be a kid again. So, anyway, that's all I have. So, thank you very much.
And Pat, I do want to say thank you as well. You know, I know this was a difficult year. I mean, it all started right in March when it hit and the trip that everybody waits for and anticipates their entire marching band career is that trip to Florida.
Yep.
And, and you know, it was a major disappointment for our kids. We pushed it back two or three times. And, you know, that's a lot of coordination on your part, a lot of communication to the families. And at the end of the day, unfortunately, you know, just like many of our trips were ruined over the last, you know, almost year now, we weren't able to go. But I will say, you being on top of things and your kind of, your tenacity to get with those folks right away allowed us to get, what was it, about 90%? Was it 80 or 90?
Right around 90, yeah.
90% of our funds back. And, and you know, many schools, I know you know too personally, that didn't get anything back for their families, you know. And these travel companies, a lot of them have went under, went under, went out of business because of this, which is very, very unfortunate. But, you know, they have a lot of expenses. All their expenses happened before the trip ever occurs. So, just because we didn't get to go doesn't mean that they didn't have hundreds of hours into coordinating, reserving rooms and shuttles and things like that. So, there are some expenses. But the fact that we were able, you know, you worked really hard to get that back for us. I know our families appreciate it. I appreciated it. And then just everything else that just kind of started tumbling after that with the whole season. I thought you guys did a great job keeping our kids safe, but also letting them experience a band, a competitive marching band season. So, just want to thank you for your work on that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Very strong, very strong leadership, Patrick. We really appreciate that, for sure.
Thank you.
I would say, if I could give you a standing ovation, Mr. Bauer, I'd give you one right now. I really love what you had to say about the importance of music and the fact that it is true. When, at the end of the day, it doesn't matter where you sit in the order of wins and losses. Our kids win every day that they get to play a musical instrument or do some fine arts. So, thank you very much.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to jump to letter C on our agenda with the donation for Deer Park Schools Families in Need. Every year, well, I shouldn't say every year, for the last four years now, we've had an anonymous donor, prior to Christmas, donate $10,000 for us to be able to help our families in need with food and Christmas presents over the Christmas holiday. So, during superintendent recommendations, I'm going to recommend that we accept that donation. But I just personally want to thank that person for their contributions to Deer Park and our families. And every year, just amazes me and just, you know, what, what a generous soul this person is. So, I just want to say thank you publicly to that person. So, all right. So, our next recognition is one that, you know, is honestly, it's too big for me to even have words to justify, the correct words to say, I really think. But we want to recognize Sandy Mills. The Board of Education Administration of Deer Park Schools would like to honor and recognize Ms. Sandy Mills, retired school nurse here at Deer Park and our clothing closet hero. Sandy began the inception of the Deer Park Clothing Room to provide for Deer Park families in need and will be passing the torch as she officially retires in January. Today, we recognize Sandy and her selfless time and efforts over the years to keep the clothing closet room stocked and supplied for all the families in need, but also for her endless compassion and source of hope for our community. So, Sandy, before we let you say anything, we have a video tribute. So, what I'd like to do is I'd like to play the video tribute, and then I will let Ms. Sandy speak. Then you can say anything or nothing. It's up to you, whatever you feel comfortable with. And then the Board of Education, you'll have an opportunity to say some things as well. So, I'm going to share my screen with you right now. This might take me just a few seconds, so please hang with me. Jake, can you, can you enable me to share my screen, please?
Yes, hang tight with me. You should now be able to do so.
Okay, I can. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to start it. And then Jake, can you make sure you, let me know if you can see the pictures found, please? Could you see that?
Yep.
And hear it?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
The most important thing is, you know, I want, I want everyone to know that there's no way this room could have existed without the love of Deer Park. This was in 1990, a mother that was here in Deer Park. She had four children, and she was a single mom. And she came to me one day. Her name was Patty Brickwig. And she, she said, Sandy, can we start a clothing room to help out so many of my friends and myself?
I want to remember all, everything you've done for us forever. So, what we are doing is we're donating, we're naming the clothing closet, Sandy's Closet, the Sandy Mills Clothing Closet. So, Sandy Mills will live on in this district forever and ever and ever. So...
Our first clothing room started over at the high school. And we had to call anybody and everybody. We called Kiwanis, we called the Cub Scouts, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, anybody, churches, and asked them if they could contact their personnel and see if we could get, you know, clothing. And so, that's how we began. Then they moved us over to Amity, and we had to be up behind the stage in the tall, in the little skinny room. And Bill Park, who was the counselor at the time, he went out to Home Depot and bought these PBS tubes. And he made me racks because there was nothing up there. And so, he hooked up these racks so we could put the clothing on them. And it was such a small, skinny little room. And I was so fearful for all the grandmas that had to come up with the little baby children. And I bought one of those guard gates for the steps. I was so worried about those little guys. Well, we were there for several years. And then they finally moved us to Howard School, and we were up on the second floor. And that worked out pretty well. There weren't as many steps, and of course, the steps were much safer. And then it started to rain, and the roof leaked, and it looked like some of the tiles were going to fall in. So, they moved us to another room upstairs. And so, we were there for quite a few years. And then they sold Howard School. So, then we had to move over to here. And so, now we're at Hope School in the art room. And when we first came in, of course, it was very artsy. There was lots of tacks and lots of staples, lots of splattered paint. And so, we brought in our friends, and they cleaned up. And my husband painted the registers. And we put holes in the storage room for the clothes. And, you know, everybody just worked together because they knew how valuable this room was. There are so many people that have come forward, not even, I mean, they live in Batavia, they live in Madeira, they live in Indian Hill. I mean, the places our clothing have come from is just unbelievable. And more importantly, the stories I've heard. You know, I'll never forget this one mother coming to me. I was just folding some little clothes, and she says, Sandy, I'm here because my son just told me yesterday that they're going to the Nutcracker. He's over at the junior high, I think. And she said, they're supposed to wear their Sunday best, and he doesn't have any Sunday best. And he, she said, I'm just hoping I can find some pants for him. And sure enough, they were there. And, and that's not because of me, that's because of you, the community. And, and then there's the parents that come, the grandparents that are raising their, their grandchildren. And they, you know, they're on a fixed income, and they're constantly saying to me, Sandy, there's no way we could make it without this room. And those are the ones that touch my heart. There's been many tears shed in this room. And I think that is the greatest gift we can ever do, is to love each other.
So, I want to dedicate this closet to you, Sandy. And thank you for everything you've done. And thank you for everything you will continue to do, because we know you're still going to be involved. Even, even if we say, Sandy, you need to stop, you're still going to do everything you can to be involved. So, thank you so much.
Hi, Sandy. I just wanted to say thank you so much for all your years of service to Deer Park and the staff and the students and everyone here. You are an amazing person. I feel so blessed that I got to work with you when you were the nurse at Holmes. You made everything seem like it was going to be okay, no matter what was going on. You were always calm and so kind to everyone. Of course, no one can forget the famous lice speeches in the gym where everyone would gather round and sit and listen to you talk about lice and how it was not a bad thing, and it didn't mean that you didn't take care of yourself. And pretty much by the end of the speech, everyone was like, oh, I kind of wish I had lice. But you were just so amazing. And thank you, thank you for taking care of our community for so many years and still taking care of the staff when you drop off those Sandy cookies and the Sandy Mills, like five-layer chocolate cake that everyone gets so excited to see in the staff lounge. We just appreciate how kind you are. And best of luck on your next adventure. We will miss you. Come back and visit. Thank you.
Hi, Sandy. Just want to wish you a very, very happy retirement. I have some great memories of you coming into my third grade classroom and having a great talk with them about their, their bodies changing and how to take care of all of that. Of course, all of your wonderful baking, your cookies and your cakes will also be missed. But most of all, all that you've done for us and for our students. So, we wish you a very, very happy retirement with your family. Take care.
Hi, Sandy. It's Amy Jones here. I just want to thank you for all you've done for Deer Park all these years. You've been a treasure for Deer Park, so kind and supportive and loving to all the staff and all the students that you've touched through the years. I remember you've always been so supportive. I've had, I had a medical concern a while back, and I had to go to the hospital from school. And I remember you came along with me, and it was such a comfort. It's just one, one example. Just thank you so much for all you've done for us through the years. And I know you're going to be cheering for Deer Park no matter what. But in this new part of your journey, I just want you to take care and just know that we really, really have been blessed to have you. Thank you.
Hi, Sandy.
Hey, we're coming to you from the Food Drive Friday afternoon here.
And we just wanted to say thank you so much for all the love and support and cookies over the years. And we hope you're going to come back and say hello to us soon. Take care. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Sandy, you know what? We miss you so much. It's Brenda. I want to tell you that when I came to Howard, you were that wonderful, wonderful face and those great hugs that just helped me super close my teeth. I'm feeling so good. You always checked on us. I'm sure that each of us was okay. Not to mention when we say that, but of course, I loved every moment I've had with you. But your stories, your sharing with your family, those are the best things about you. You have such joy and such love in your heart. And I always think, every day, when things get rough, we'll always see you again. Sandy, enjoy your retirement and just know you're loved by so much.
Congratulations on your retirement, Sandy. I hope you get to relax, which I know probably won't happen. But I'm happy to hear that. I hope it's a lot of great time with your family, doing things you've wanted to do, including baking. We've all enjoyed that too. It was a pleasure working with you at the buildings for several years. You're a great person to be around all the time. Congratulations.
Hi, Sandy. My name is Jill Jones. I never had the pleasure of working with you, but I have very much enjoyed your cookies and cakes that you bring in. It's so kind of you. I wish you a wonderful retirement. And if you ever get bored, please feel free to keep baking those cookies and cakes because they make our day so much better. So, enjoy your time. Thanks again. Bye.
Sandy, just wanted to say hello. Thank you. We're going to miss you here at Deer Park. A special thank you for helping me get started here. I'm a little bit nervous when in my interview, they said, no one's really here to train you. So, I just kind of, kind of had to figure it out. And then Jay gave me your number, and you saved me. So, I just wanted to say thank you. You're a great person. I call you Mother Teresa for a reason. And good luck to you.
Sandy Mills is one of the most caring and generous people I know. From calling every kindergarten family before entering school to get a full history of each incoming student, to creating the community clothes closet, she is always there, selflessly giving to others. I have many fond memories of Sandy, from her joy of anything sparkly and especially from our staff Christmas dinners, where she always came with a smile, a joke, and the best gifts. Sandy, I want you to know that at this very moment, I am still wearing those wonderful handmade slippers that you gave each and every one of us. For all those who didn't know Sandy, she is one of a kind. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Sandy. She taught me how to look for the positives in each situation and what it means to truly care for others. I am a better person from knowing her. I wish you all the best, Sandy, and a very Merry Christmas.
Hi, Sandy. It's Rita Staley. I just wanted to thank you for everything you've done for us here in Deer Park, the many lice talks, safe shoe assemblies we've had, EpiPen training, stress relief classes after school, and oh my, the Resiliency Program, how wonderful that was. And let me tell you, every teacher who has taught you Resiliency Program has definitely used it this year. We're all saying, life can change, it can change, without getting upset at least a million times this year. So, yes, thank you. Thank you very much. And I know you like quotes as much as I do. And so, I wanted to see if you remembered possibly who said this. Holding a piece of broccoli, this person said, I don't know why God made this piece of food so darn healthy and tastes so bad. And then, the next one is, everything's better with glitter. Isn't that the truth? And I do not have the amount of glitter that you deserve for all of the wonderful things that you've done here in Deer Park. But I found a little bit. Thanks, Sandy. You are amazing. Love you. Bye.
Hi, Sandy. It's Celeste Simonson. I just wanted to take a moment and thank you for all of the service that you've done for the Deer Park Community Schools. You know, being around in the park for a little while now and thinking about all the times that I've seen you interact with kids. So compassionate, Sandy, so loving, nonjudgmental. I mean, anything from a deep gash to just a hurt belly. You were there with a loving arm, a hug to give them, and just let that child know that they were the center of your world for that moment. So, thank you for everything that you've done for us, Sandy, and best of luck in what your next chapter holds. Love you.
Hi, Sandy. I'm going to tell everybody about my first experience with you as a parent. My son was in the first grade at Howard. And one evening, I got a phone call from you. Such a pleasant, happy voice. You said, Mrs. Rat? And I said, yes. She says, I hate to call you a baby, but David tested liquidly blood on his eye test today. Well, I went to say it first, and then she chuckled. Sandy was telling me that David purposely failed his eye test. I'm on a crisis and glasses. So, that was my first experience. And she was able to put the joy and happiness at one end of that. My next experience, Sandy, as a coworker, you taught me so much, so much that I was able to say to children like "eterea" from Chupacabra. You're constantly in my head. I think of all the wonderful things you've said over the years, Resiliency. I just have a lot of fond of loving them. I hope you enjoy every bit of retirement you deserve. Love you, friend. Take care.
Hi, Sandy. This is Donna Biding. I just wanted to wish you well in whatever adventures come next for you. I wanted to say thank you for all you've done for Deer Park, the community, the children, and for us as a staff. When I first started at Deer Park, you gave me a little angel that I still keep in the glove box of my car. And you shared a story about how you never get road rage, because when somebody speeds by you or does something that they shouldn't, that you just take a deep breath and you say to yourself, well, maybe that person has to go to the bathroom. And so, whenever I see that angel in my car, it reminds me of your kindness and your love toward others. And I just want to thank you for that and for the example that you have set for all of us. Best wishes, Sandy.
Sandy Mills is an angel in tennis shoes. She scurries around the district offering hope, love, and joy. For over 30 years, Sandy has tirelessly served the Deer Park community. She's a fierce advocate for kids and a competitive bingo player. Sandy, my favorite memory of your time as our school nurse was the yearly lice talk. By the time you finished, every kid won at lice because you said that only people that are lovey get lice because they share and hug. Every teacher would be scratching their head, and every kid was mesmerized by the story of how they needed to help their mommy and daddy because it is a lot of work. You, my friend, can turn lemons into lemonade better than anyone I know. Sandy, thank you for teaching me the power of giving. Thank you for teaching me that God always provides and to just give, not judge. I know you will continue to be a blessing to the world as you move forward with life's journey. I love you, my dear friend.
In conclusion, I want to thank all my sponsors.
In conclusion, I want to thank all my sponsors. And I want to thank all the wonderful people in Deer Park. Just so you understand, your gently used hand-me-downs have become terrific picker-uppers to so many people in this community and whoever needs them. So thank you, thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart. I may be the one in the middle, but I'm not the one doing all the work. Believe me, it's all your love and caring that has made this room work and I thank you so very much.
So Sandy, with, with that, I think it's safe to say you are loved by everyone here in Deer Park. And I am going to just turn it over to you. Is there anything that you would like to say or, or, or not say? It's up to you.
I do Jay. I just want to say to everybody that again, they have made me who I am. You know, their, their wonderful, their wonderful openness, their caring, their love. It's such a, it, it made me a better person. And as much as they, they think I made them a better person, we're all in this together, you know? I don't think you can be around such a wonderful group of people and not be affected by them. And Deer Park is, will always be a love to my life. I pray for the children every day there because I, I'll never forget a little kindergartner came up to me one, one day and said to me, Mrs. Mills, do you have children? And I said, I do. I have two children, but they're grown. And so they're on their own, doing their own thing now. And she was quiet for a minute and then she said, well, we'll all be your children. And I said, thank you. And from that moment on, they were all my children, believe me. And that's the way it went. But I'm, I was blessed to be in Deer Park, you know, when I initially started. Because I am a spirit-filled person. You know, I, I didn't know how, when I wanted to pray for the children, I didn't know what to do. And I had prayed to God to tell me what to do. And he said, just love them Sandy, love them so much. That's what prayer really is. And so that's what I did. I said, I got it. I'll do it. And you know, it's so easy to love children because they're so honest and truthful and open. And it was, it was magical. I'm so blessed. I'm so blessed. I know you think I'm a blessing, but I'm telling you something, you gave me more than I could have ever give back. Thank you so much Deer Park for everything.
Thank you Sandy. And it's, and it's easy to love you. So Board of Education, I'm going to turn it over to you. I know some of you want to say some things.
Well, I definitely want to say that as you listen to Sandy talk, she always turns everything back around. It's never about her. And she is such a gift and has been such a gift. And I found a couple of things. So this is a resiliency book that my daughter happened to do in second grade, happened to be in Mrs. Huster's class. But I don't know if you can see it, but on it, it says, I love Mrs. Mills. She's awesome. She is the best. She takes care of us. And I just saw this the other day and I thought, oh, how perfect is that? And inside are all of your resiliency. And then they wrote about each one of those. And it was such a joy to read this, but the number of things in here that go back to Mrs. Mills and what she has done for me, this was Caitlin, was just unbelievable. Then I'm hanging Christmas ornaments and I'm sure a lot of you have this. It's an angel that Mrs. Mills made when we were celebrating her retirement. She's giving us presents. And it was an angel and all of my children have one. And every year we hang it on the tree and we reflect on what a wonderful angel Sandy Mills is to our family and to the Deer Park community. So I just want to say I love you.
I love you too.
We have our angel here too.
Yeah.
That's great.
Sandy, I, most of my interactions with you have been walking down the hall, seeing you coming towards me with a great big smile on your face. And it was always a pleasure to, to be with you. And I certainly appreciate all the extra work that you've, you've given the district. And the high point of my school year was always when Janice would come home saying, we had the Lice Talk today. So thank you so much.
My memory, wait a second, let me go Chris real quick. My memory of you was you called me one time when Brandon was, Brandon Doty. He was at Howard and he was so thin, but he's always been a skinny, skinny kid. You were worried he didn't have enough to eat at home and you were going to come over with food. And I said, no, he's fine. Skinny. He eats all the time and he still eats and he's still absolutely skinny. I just wanted to say thank you that you were so caring to actually call out of your way, you know, at night on your own time.
You're welcome.
I stand, hi Sandy, it's Chris. And the Lice Talk was always amazing. We used to do a Christmas party where we would take women's panty liners and we'd make them into souls of feet. And we'd have a party and you'd have to go search the room and find your soul for the night. I still have one of those on my Christmas tree. And that's when Julie Glenn became my soul. And we always talked about Sandy and Lice and you would come into the room. And so we have what we call golden rods. And Karen and Peggy, if you would bend your heads down right now, I will check your heads for Lice because we would all be, it was, listen, she was all about kids, but as soon as she walked in the room, it was always, I'm first, I'm first. The teacher's always first. The second thing I want to say to Sandy is that when we, Dan Empadji said it best, when he said, God gives an angel to every area and God gave us Sandy Mills. And I'm so blessed that I got to be part of, be a trumpeter here for Sandy Mills. And when you would ask for something, Sandy, that black bucket did not exist. And I, one thing I want to read to you because this is kind of from Julie Glenn, okay? She can't be here tonight, but this is what she said. I got to put on my readers now. I'm getting old. It says, legends say that hummingbirds float free of time carrying our hopes for love, joy, and celebration. The hummingbird's delicate grace reminds us that life is rich, beauty is everywhere. Every personal connection has meaning and that their laughter is life's sweetest creation. God bless you Sandy. We love you.
Thank you.
Thanks Sandy, this is Dan Downey. I had the pleasure of meeting you some years ago and you gave me a tour of the clothing closet and I was just so impressed. And then my wife Diane would tell me that of all the donations, and we would bring donations up to the closet, all cleaned and ready to go. And Diane said, you know, Sandy still takes us home and washes every piece of this, these clothing pieces and then brings them back, folds them, lays them out, and then helps the families find what they needed. But just want to say you're definitely a true treasure to the Deer Park School District and truly a modern day saint. And on behalf of the school district, just want to thank you for your service and wish you all the luck in your next endeavor.
Thank you so much.
We also want to thank your family. Sorry Jay. We want to thank your family for sharing.
There's been a lot of sharing.
And Mrs. Bossy, I was going to say the same thing. I was going to thank Renee and Julie for joining us this evening. You have a wonderful mom. I'm sure you already know that. Is there anything you guys wanted to say? I don't want to put you on the spot, but just want, if you wanted to, I want to make sure you had the opportunity.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity to share in this love. It's, I've been brought to tears maybe 10 times. So just grateful.
Hi Julie. Hi, good to see you.
Julie's so glad you could join us tonight. I know you're busy.
No, nothing more important.
Anyway, it's been a blessing to be with Sandy all these years and, and to help in a small, little, tiny, tiny way, anything I can do, but.
We thought that his gray hair was due to the children until they left and then his hair got grayer. So now, now we know who really caused it.
Well Sandy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And you know, again, thank you to your whole family for, for sharing you with us. And you know, we, we can't say thank you enough. There's, there's not enough words to describe how we feel about you. So.
I'm just honored. Thank you so much. Thank you for the gifts of who you are in my life. It makes all the difference in the world. I love you guys. Never forget that.
Love you too Sandy Mills.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, Board of Education, while I enjoyed that very, very much and, and I'm going to miss seeing Sandy as often as we have and I'm going to miss the hugs. I think it's time to close this session and close the recognition and donation part portion of our board meeting this evening.
All right, I guess we have to get on to more business. It's going to be hard to move on from that. That was wonderful.
Yes, it was.
All right. So if I could have a motion for the approval of the November 21st regular board meeting minutes.
So move.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving the November 21st regular board minutes, please signify by stating aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bye Sandy, thanks for being here.
Bye Sandy.
All right, on to the treasurer's financial report.
Welcome Papa Bear.
Uh, let's see here, the November 2020 financial report. The function level 2100 and 2200s are increased, expenditures have increased. This is mainly due to the Hamilton County ESC. They've changed their billing format from monthly to quarterly billing. And then the function 2300 also had an increase in expenditures. This was due to a backlog of outstanding invoices being all paid at once. One of our vendors, they switched from mailing paper invoices to sending invoices via email. And somehow those emails ended up in someone's spam mailbox. But we're now all caught up on those. And all of these expenditure increases you'll see will also reflect in the object level 400. There's a slight increase there as well. I believe that concludes my financial report.
Do you accept the financial report?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving the November financial report, please signify by stating aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, you have recommendations for us?
I do. Um, I have a recommendation to authorize to invest. The first is from a redemption from Star Ohio on November 24th, 2020 in the amount of $1.5 million. And another redemption for, from Star Ohio on 12/3 of $1 million. And these are to be used for payroll accounts payable and any outstanding checks.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving the authorization to invest Star Ohio, please signify by stating aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And also have a redemption from Star Ohio Plus to Star Ohio in the amount of $2 million.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
What is that one for Jeff?
Um, you cannot redeem money from Star Ohio Plus directly to your bank. It has to go from Ohio Plus to Star Ohio and then to your bank.
Okay.
So those monies have to be moved down the line essentially.
It's just a movement. Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All those in favor of approving the redemption with Star Ohio Plus, please signify by stating aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I think that's all you got Jeff. All right, moving on to reports of the superintendent.
Yeah, yes, it's very abbreviated this evening. I just have a, a couple of different things. Actually, I should say one, one thing in particular. The Food Services Nutritional Standards Compliance Report is something that we have to briefly discuss each, each year to have documented in our board meeting minutes. And essentially what the, the report states, and I'm going to read this, it's very short. But it states that the Food Service Department complies with all nutrition standards as outlined in the board-approved nutrition standards. Daily production records are completed in each building to document a specific requirements that meet the stated requirements. These records are kept on site for a minimum of three years. The food and beverages that are served and sold in the cafeterias meet all bid requirements that are mandated through the National School Lunch Program. Our goal is to serve the most nutritious meals that the students are excited to eat and that meet or exceed our nutrition standards. We always continue to search for new products and ideas for our customers. So we just have to briefly touch on the fact that we are meeting all nutrition compliance standards here in Deer Park. And now we will have that documented in our minutes. That is it for my board reports this evening.
Thank you. And just in speaking with our food service, just shout out to all of them for continuing to prepare meals for the kids through hybrid, through remote learning, through all of this craziness. They are priceless also. So thank you so much to Mary Lynn and her crew for keeping all that going.
And I want to echo that, a huge thank you to our, our, our staff, our cafeteria staff. And also a huge thank you to Jake Snyder. He's been our, our point person and really lining up the food passouts. And him and his wife Kelly have actually done many of those themselves, along with some of our other teachers who are volunteering and some of our cafeteria workers who have put the meals together who also volunteer. So thank you to Jake for leading that effort as well to, to keep our families fed.
Thank you. All right, moving on to recommendations.
Okay, we do have a couple of recommendations this evening. The first recommendation is regarding that donation that I mentioned earlier. So I recommend the acceptance of a $10,000 anonymous donation to be put towards Deer Park families in need over the Christmas holiday season.
Second.
All those in favor of approving and accepting the $10,000 anonymous donation to be, to be put towards Deer Park families in need over the Christmas holiday season, please signify by stating aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Peggy, I do want to say one thing on that one as well. I want to thank Patty Haden. I know Patty was on this call and, and you know, Patty's another one, just like Sandy, that does so much behind the scenes. And there's a lot of, you know, it sounds great on the surface to get a $10,000 donation. And we do appreciate it more than this person probably could ever know. But then that is a lot of work on our end to be able to provide the, the gifts and the gift cards and the coordination and organization of that is tremendous in, in, in lining it up with the families and making sure they receive it. And there are certain things that, certain protocols we have to meet as a school district when we do this kind of thing to be compliant. So it, it's a big undertaking. It's not, you know, it doesn't just magically happen. So I want to thank Patty for really taking the lead on all of that.
Thank you Patty.
Yeah, thank you Patty.
Thank you.
Okay, I do have two personnel recommendations. I recommend rescinding the supplemental contracts for the 2020, 2021 school year of Kevin Moulton and Cheryl Walsh. And that is in regards to 3D printers club that we're going to split that. But with everything that's happening, that just did not get off the ground this year.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor of rescinding the supplemental contracts for the 2020, 2021 school year for the 3D printers club for Kevin Moulton and Cheryl Walsh, please signify by stating aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Um, I do want to talk a little bit, our, our next agenda item is superintendent committees. And we're going to have a little restructure of those going into the, uh, 2021 calendar year. And I just wanted to make everybody aware of, of that restructuring. Uh, I'm going to actually move curriculum and instruction and, uh, communications to superintendent reports. Um, so that Dr. Orso, our Director of Curriculum Instruction, Jake Snyder, our Executive Director of Communication, can actually give those reports at our board meetings. I'm going to continue with, uh, building and grounds, finance, Great Oaks, OSBA and policy as our committee reports. Um, so we will have, uh, others report out on, on those pieces. Um, those committees in particular meet every month and there are, there is a lot of work every month as far as consulting and collaborating and making decisions. Whereas it doesn't, you know, from a communications and curriculum and instruction, that's not necessarily the case. Each month it's more of a, a share out of information of what's happening here in the school district. And so that's why there's going to be a little bit of, uh, the segregation of, of those for the meetings coming up in 2021. So I just wanted to put that out there. Um, and with that being said, I'm going to jump the building and grounds and, and Mr. Godwin and Mr. Downey, if you have anything to report tonight, I know we had abbreviated meeting, but if you want to share out uh, on what we discussed, that would be great.
Paul, are you going to grant that? I really don't.
Sure. I'll tell you, I'll take it Dan. Um, is, is Mr. Phillips said it's rather short meeting tonight, but, uh, a couple of highlights, uh, is that, uh, made, we've made repairs to the roof at Amity and hopefully that's resolved, uh, those issues, but we're keeping track of them. Uh, there are a number of things, but it, all three buildings that, uh, they're going to do over the, uh, Christmas break. Um, to, uh, things that that just haven't gotten done as a result of other, uh, priorities. Uh, they're, I am putting, uh, carpeting in one of the, uh, discovery classrooms. Um, the lockers at the high school have been delayed and so they won't get installed until spring break. And the wheelchair lift, uh, at the junior, senior high school, going from the first to the second floor is, uh, now in place and functional for, uh, whatever needs we have there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Godwin. Appreciate it. And, and one thing I want to mention, uh, Mr. Godwin talked about carpeting being putting one, put, being put in to one of our discover, to our discovery classroom here at the, uh, Holmes Building. And we did have some leftover carpet from the renovations of our offices. And so that carpet is being used by Mr. Conover and his crew. So it really is, is kind of a, a wash costers other than the time that they're going to spend to put it in, which should be pretty minimal. So we already have supplies, materials on site. So I did want to mention that. Um, jumping down to finance, Mrs. Bossy or Mr. Downey, do you have anything for finance?
I don't Jay.
Okay.
We, um, we did have our financial committee meeting and very well attended. It's always wonderful that, um, I agree with you Jay, that that's a really critical committee that we have because, uh, we have some really strong leaders in the financial world that really, uh, give some good insight and in all things related. So, um, just want to thank them.
Absolutely. And I agree 110%. You know, just in our last meeting, uh, was it last week, last Tuesday morning? Uh, we're, we're talking about, you know, we reflected on the state of the schools address and where we are as a district financially. And they just, they had some great insight for us and some great recommendations. So Mrs. Bossy, you hit the nail on the head. Uh, they do provide a, 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 a great service to us and some really great insight from both a community and a business perspective. So really appreciate their input. Okay. Uh, Mr. Smith is not attend, he do, he's not able to attend this evening. Uh, so we do not have a Great Oaks vocational report. Anything to report on Mr. Godwin or Mrs. Huster from OSBA?
No. Right now, I think, um, it's status quo as far as what's going on in the legislature.
Yeah, they are, uh, obviously during lame duck session, there is a lot of activity. Uh, but from a school standpoint, and OSBA pushes a lot of this from an avocation, advocating standpoint. Uh, but I, um, you know, the important bill right now is the cut Patterson bill. And it, it seems like it's pretty much at a standstill right now. Not, I don't even believe it's going to be heard by the Senate, even though it passed, I think, an 83 to five majority in the House. Uh, and it's hard to believe that with that much of bipartisan agreement, it wouldn't even be heard in the Senate. Uh, but I don't believe it is. And, and it looks like they're not going to talk about it until the new general assembly, uh, starting in 2021. So that's unfortunate.
Hey Jay, is there already a Senate bill allocated or now that it's passed the House, they'll have to now go to the Senate, bring it back up, pass sponsorship and.
Yes, it is. It, they do have a companion, a companion bill. I believe it was Senate Bill 85. If I'm not mistaken, I, I'm not sure if that's the correct number. Uh, but that's off the top of my head. That's what's ringing. Uh, but yes, there was a companion bill and they did have some committee hearings on it. Uh, but I don't believe that they're going to take the action to introduce the bill into the Senate for vote. And, and, uh, you know, I could see kind of your gears turning, Mr. Downey, as we talk about it and kind of wondering probably why that is. And I think like anything and everything else, when it gets into legislation, I want to, you know, I don't want to be disrespectful, but politics are at play.
Yeah. And I know you had indicated there was not a lot of support, um, specifically Senator Blessing. And and I, I assume he drives a lot of that, even though he's now retired. So could that possibly open the door for other positive conversation?
Well, Senator Blessing is not retired. That was, uh, Representative Patterson.
Oh, Patterson in the House.
He's very supportive.
Yes. Uh, Sen- Senator Blessing is supportive of, of public school to a certain extent. He's not supportive of the cut Patterson bill. In his mind, he feels like it's too expensive. Um, and he thinks there needs to be some modifications to the bill. He also, you know, what he stated to me is he does believe there needs to be some additional funds put towards public education. And there needs to be some equi, uh, you know, a little bit more equity there. Um, so he said that he believes Cut Patterson's bill will pass with the new general assembly. But he also believes that there needs to be some modifications made. And like I said, you know, he mentioned multiple times that especially now in a, in, in pre, or I should say mid towards post COVID world. Um, you know, the price tag was really high and he wasn't sure where the state was going to get that money. And therefore, uh, needed to make some modifications to it.
More to come.
More to come. Very.
As you talk, as you're talking about that, Mr. Patterson was very supportive though, wasn't he Jay?
Yes.
I mean, he was, he was one of our cheerleaders.
Absolutely. He definitely was one of the cheerleaders, you know, again, uh, Bob Cup and John Patterson started the committee three years ago, three years ago, November to, to put together the superintendents and treasures, eight superintendents and eight treasures across the state to really start beginning to look at what it costs to educate a child here in the state of Ohio. And coming up with an equitable and adequate way to fund public schools across the state, knowing that it, the costs are different to educate a child depending on so many different variables. And so they have done a, a tremendous job putting together a funding formula that makes sense. Uh, that is fair, that is adequate, that is equitable. And, and it's unfortunate that it's stalling right now in the Senate. Um, but hopefully with the new general assembly, we'll get there and we can move this thing forward and, uh, do a, do a better service to our kids in Ohio and our schools. Okay. Um, lastly, we have policy and I don't think really it's been quiet on the policy front. So we probably don't, Mrs., uh, Houston, Mr. Godwin, you don't have anything to report there, correct?
No, I don't.
Okay. That is the end of the committee reports. Mrs. Bossy.
All right. Thank you very much. We just have a little bit of board organization business. We just need to elect a board president pro tem. This is just for the January organizational meeting. And then, um, I know we'll need to talk about what we're going to do moving forward for next year as far as president, vice president, and who's sitting on what committees. But this is just to elect the president pro tem for that January organizational meeting.
I nominate Peggy Bossy to be pro tem president. Is that how I say it right?
That works.
My second.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of electing Peggy as board, Peggy Bossy as board president pro tem for the January meeting, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, on to board discussion.
Yes. Um, I have one item and I know we may have a few other things to talk about through board discussion, but I just listed one, one item on the agenda. And that's really to talk about our second semester learning models. When I say models, I'm talking about at, uh, Amity and a junior, senior high school. And before we get into that, I just want to get, also give a little recap on first semester. Kind of where, what had happened, where we're at, and, and then leading into the conversation of where we're going. And so everybody knows, you know, when we started the school year back in August, uh, we decided to give ourselves a couple of weeks buffer, uh, to be able to get in, learn, learn protocols, routines with a smaller nu- number of students. So we went hybrid. And, and that actually led into a little bit longer of a hybrid model. Um, the end of October, we decided to come back full time. After just about three weeks of full-time face-to-face instruction, uh, we did see at the junior, senior high school, three cases that we felt were related. Um, and, and therefore we pushed pause again. And since then, since, uh, that I believe end of October, beginning of November, we have been in the, the hybrid model at Amity Elementary and the virtual remote model at the junior, senior high school. Again, to, to review, uh, we decided remote at the junior, senior high school was a better avenue because our kids will be able to see our teacher, their teachers every single day. Um, as opposed to the hybrid model at the junior, senior high where it was, uh, very much like an AMV, A students on Monday, Tuesdays, B students on Thursday, Fridays with a remote day in between on Wednesdays. Um, obviously at the elementary school, it's a little tougher to do remote, uh, when you talk about especially the, the young ones, the kindergartners through third graders. When you talk about being home alone or being, you know, trying to get on the technology, navigate it. Obviously being home alone isn't a, isn't an option for our young elementary kids and even really our upper older elementary kids a, a lot of times. And, and the technology navigation is difficult. So we decided to stick with the hybrid model at the elementary. I think I've been pretty clear, uh, from the beginning that my goal is to get our students back in school full time. Uh, I feel like obviously we, they are best served here in class. We've been weighing that. As I've talked about a thousand times, it feels like with, with the safety of our students and our staff. Um, back on December the 7th, we had the goal of bringing all students back, uh, face to face. And because of, you know, really a high incidence among our staff at that time, that really caused us to stay in the current models of remote and hybrid until Christmas break. Um, you know, right now I, I, I'm happy to report. I think it's a, a great indicator and a great sign. I'm looking it up on my phone just to make sure I got the numbers right. Um, but in across the district currently, we have one positive student and two positive staff members. That's across the district. The governor has also, as most of you know, I shouldn't say was really the governor, the CDC came out with recommendation last week that the quarantine can be moved from 14 days down to 10 days. And if a student or staff member has a po- a negative test on day five or after, they can actually come back after seven days of being quarantined. Now that's a pretty tough turnaround. Most of the time when you have a test on day five, if you're, if you're able to get that result back by day seven, it's a miracle. Um, but, uh, it can't happen. Sometimes I've, I've heard of people getting their test back, results back the very next day. So they could actually come back on day six. So there's been some change there. The Ohio Department of Health adopted those recommendations. And the Ohio, or the Hamilton County Public Health Department has given us the green light to be able to return kids and staff members under those new guidance. However, they will stress and they do stress every time you're on a, a meeting or a phone call with them, that they still believe 14 days is best practice. Um, but we can adhere to those, uh, requirements that have been set forth by the CDC and adopted by the Ohio Department of Health. So with that being said, I, what I would like to do, Board of Education, I'd like to have some, have some discussion around this because I would like to hear your opinions and your thoughts about second semester. But I would like to also give you kind of what I'm thinking personally before we start. Um, you know, with those numbers that I just mentioned, uh, one positive student case K to 12 and, and two positive staff cases at this time. Um, you know, I've said it, I'll say it again, I've, I've said it five minutes ago. My goal is to have our kids back in class. I think there's so many negative, uh, things that happen physically, socially, academically, emotionally, mental health wise with our kids not being here. And I think those are, the longer we're out and not in school full time, the more that compounds. And if we are able to, from a, a staffing and student perspective, to have kids here full time, I think we should. I also know that that could, uh, cause, uh, some additional quarantine, um, down the road. But I, you know, when you, when you weigh the, the cost, uh, benefit with not being here, with being here, our kids need to be here. And I'm not saying that health and safety is not important because it absolutely is. But the numbers tell me, uh, and I know we're in a different model right now. And so that probably has something to do with it. Not naive enough to not think that. But I think the numbers within our district tell me that, that we can be back in school. So my recommendation would be to come back in a hybrid model that very first week after Christmas break for two reasons. One, to give us a little separation from, from Christmas break. Uh, we know we had an increase in staff cases there that midweek after Thanksgiving. So after New Year's and after Christmas to give us a, a buffer week. I'm saying a hybrid model at both buildings because at the junior, senior high school, we will be starting several new elective courses. And I, I think that's very difficult for teachers and students to begin a remote class with never, some, in some cases, never having met each other, not having the relationship with each other. So I think a smart thing for that first week would be to come back in a hybrid model to allow our teachers and our kids to get to know each other. We do have kids coming back into our buildings from the remote option that, that chose remote first semester. They are now choosing to come back into the building. Um, and so that would give them a week to kind of assimilate back into a face-to-face climate, uh, or a face-to-face instructional model. And then the following week, January the 11th, I would recommend, my personal recommendation, again, this is why we're going to discuss it, um, that we would then come back full time with all kids, January 11th. Um, face-to-face. And I would love to be able to stay face-to-face as long as we can. I know, uh, it, it in Southwest schools where my kids go, I have a high schooler, a junior higher and a preschooler. Um, they made it face-to-face the entire first semester until just this week. The high school went remote on Monday and the junior high went remote on Tuesday. So just this last week before break. Um, and I would love to be able to do that here. So I'm going to turn it over to you. I know you guys have some comments and thoughts and opinions on it as well.
I think we need to be back full time. So soon as possible. I am not a teacher.
You are right now.
Yeah.
Good one. Night school teacher.
Anybody else? I mean, I agree. I think we need to be in school. I can understand and appreciate the thought of hybrids starting back because of, but I do struggle. I don't know. This is as always, I struggle with that too. Because everything we put off because we're not sure. So the longer we put off not being sure. So I can support what you're saying. I just, I struggle both ways because I agree, we need everybody safe. We need everybody healthy. But at the same time, we need everybody in school. So the struggle there is real. I, I trust that you will follow the numbers and make the right decision.
Mrs. Bossy, when you say it's a struggle, what, kind of what are you going back and forth on in your head? Are you, uh, the hybrid model the first week back? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes. I can understand, appreciate the hybrid model. It's just, here we go again. It's another week. So, I mean, that's but then in the grand scheme of the health and safety, it's just one week. But, but we've said that, you know, it ended up the whole semester being different than what we had hoped. And I'm not blaming or accusing anyone because it, it's a rough thing and we have to follow the numbers and we have to have the staff to be able to teach our kids, you know, and if, if they're unhealthy, then remote or hybrid is the best thing to do. So. remote or hybrid is the best thing to do. So I'm giving you absolutely nothing. Support.
I think, uh, you know, what you're saying there probably is what a lot of our parent, parents are feeling. You know, they want their kids in school. Now, I know, uh, and I probably will get a bunch of emails tomorrow morning for saying that because I do know we have some parents that don't want their kids in school. They, they appreciate the hybrid and the remote models that we're in. Their kids are finding success. But we have another whole group of parents whose kids aren't finding success and they're really, really struggling. And I know as a whole, um, you know, I feel as a whole that our, our kids are way, way better served, obviously, here in school.
Can I ask how many kids are coming back from the, um?
And how many, and how many kids are, are not coming back?
Yeah, at, uh, so I have the school, uh, choice update that I received from Stacy after the cutoff. We have 31 students K to five that are returning from virtual to face-to-face instruction.
K to five, okay.
And, and we hit, and that's so you have sixth grade levels, 31 kids that averages about five kids a grade level.
Okay.
About a kid a class. And K, grades six through 12, we have 36 students returning face-to-face, which that's seven grade levels. And again, that averages about five kids per class. Going the other way, I think Paul will ask, I don't have that on his document, but it's not, not hard to remember. I think it was three and three, three at the K five level that were going from face-to-face to virtual and three in grade seven to 12. So that would be a net return of 28 K to five and a net return of 33, um, grade six through 12.
And so how does that, how many does that leave, uh, not face-to-face then for the rest of the year?
I would have to look that number up and get it back to you as far as you're, you're talking about total.
Yeah.
While you guys are discussing it, Paul, go ahead and share your comments. I can probably find that for you.
Okay, I, it, it, I agree that, uh, coming back hybrid is probably the best thing to do. Uh, I would agree that staying out, uh, using it one more week, to get us through any potential exposures due to the New Year's celebrations that was obviously going to take place, is probably a wise decision. You could argue one way or another about extending it two weeks, but I think one week, especially given the, change in the quarantine numbers that, uh, we've been given, uh, is probably a reason, a reasonable way to go.
Chris, go ahead.
I, I feel that, you know, I feel I want the kids back in school. And I think that whereas when you do the hybrid, if you look, and I was calculating the dates, but I do believe when our kids now leave for this, will be gone on Thursday. And if we go and wait that week for them to come back for that hybrid on that Thursday, they're almost out, I think 19 days. So when I look at that, I think about, wow, that's a lot of time without a teacher. So I, Jay, I, I respect your recommendation for us to be, if you want to do that hybrid that week. But I really feel strongly that as soon as we can move forward and get our kids back into the building, the better off we are. And there's lots of initiatives that need to be accomplished there. And I think the security of being in the classroom with a teacher is one of those.
Thank you. Dan, do you have thoughts, opinions? Oh, Jake, can you unmute Dan, please?
I just asked to unmute him. He should be able to unmute now. Yep, there you go.
Thanks, Jake. Appreciate it. Um, Jay, I, I, uh, agree with your comments. The, the, the buffer week, um, again, I agree with Chris, it, it's another week away. But I think like we did with Thanksgiving, it probably makes sense to allow some time for any type of COVID, additional COVID exposure to shake itself out. And then I, I, I agree with the rest of the team here. Let's get back into class as soon as we can. Again, it's important for our kids to have that face-to-face with the teachers. And the fact that our staffing currently, which is two out, uh, it sounds like we're in pretty good shape uh, in regards to, to our team.
Correct. I have these numbers, Paul, for you. We're looking at approximately at Amity, um, 114 kids virtual, uh, where we had 142 virtual the first semester. And then approximately, let me do the math here. 83 kids virtual, uh, the high, junior, senior high school. And the first semester, we had 116 virtual.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
So they, they will basically stay virtual. That's, is what you're, is right. The, the ones that are opting to stay virtual will stay virtual for the rest of the year then.
Correct. The, the students that chose remote, just like in first semester, we ask them to make that commitment for a semester. So they'll be, they'll be remote for the rest of the first semester. And a majority of them, all but, you know, 30 at, at each group, have experienced it. They know what it is. And so they obviously are comfortable with it and are doing, uh, fine with it. Okay. Again, I, I, this decision isn't easy and it can always, my recommendation could change on Christmas Day and change again on New Year's Day and change again January 3rd. But, you know, I try to let our staff and our families know as early as possible to give them time to prepare and, and, uh, line up childcare, daycare and, and other things that they need to do to make this work. So I would, I'm going to put out a release tomorrow, announcing that our decision is, uh, hybrid for that first week of January 4th. And that, uh, we will be expecting all students to return face-to-face on Monday, January, the 11th.
I have a question. Has the high school ever been hybrid?
Yes.
Beginning of the year.
Yes.
The very beginning of the year.
That's correct. And then we, then when we pivoted and went to, um, we came back in person and then when we, we had to switch back, that's when they started to go.
Okay.
So for approximately two, two months, they were hybrid.
Okay.
Okay. That is all I had on my, uh, agenda for board discussion. Board of Ed, do you have other items for board discussion this evening?
I do. I'd like to sprinkle across the minutes how blessed and thankful we are to have had the years we've had with Sandy Mills. And to say that when you ask Sandy, how come she's the way she is? She just says the Holy Spirit moves her. And I think she moves us too. So I want to do that. And I also want to say, sprinkle across the minutes, so thank you to Mr. Patterson. Because three years ago, they started this movement for us to, um, to change school funding. And night, when was that? 1985? When was it that, that became? Yes. So look at this, all these years and every time it comes forward, there's enough money. And I, and I guess I'm on a soapbox now. It frustrates me that there's money for so many other things, but there's not for what the most priceless thing in the world is education. So, but I want to, I want to send a thank you to him also. So those are my sprinkles for the night.
Thank you. And, and Jeff, just so you know, um, I, I know you, as, as still a rather new treasure. I'm not sure if you've had any minutes sprinkled. Uh, we just asked that you document that in the minutes, uh, so that we can recognize.
My first sprinkling, but.
Your, your first.
And I'd like to congratulate our Mr. Lewis on the birth of his baby Audrey.
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
And look at that. She's not even a week old or maybe, maybe is a week today. And here he is at seven, eight o'clock at night in his office. His wife is going to kill him.
And wait a minute, Mr. Phillips, where are you? Out of costume, I see also. I, I know.
Quick question, or when you put out the release, sports and Parker's things are still happening over break?
They are. And I'm glad you, I'm glad you said that. Uh, I actually had an email from a parent this evening asking about that. And I do want to, I do want to address that briefly. You know, and I actually had a phone call from another parent last week to talk about why, why are Parkers? And why are athletics and those types of things still occurring? Even though we're virtual or remote at the high school and in hybrid at Amity. And really my answer to that is, when we were coming back to school full-time, December 7th, we had to pivot because of staffing. We had six staff impacted by COVID at the elementary school and six staff at that time, when I sent out the release, impacted at the junior, senior high school. And we, I think we had two students district-wide. So it really wasn't a, a student issue. I've also heard, uh, from many parents, how, how their children, how their kids are struggling, mentally, socially, emotionally, just having a lot of issues that really hadn't had in the past. And mostly from isolation and kind of confinement from school and just being at home. And so our goal is if we are able to provide these oppor- opportunities for our kids, I'd like to be able to do that. They are smaller groups of kids. Typically when you're, you know, our wrestling groups, I, I think have one or two kids wrestling this year. Our basketball groups are typically around 10. I know our men's basketball is smaller than that, six or seven this year. But typically around 10 kids, Parker's rehearsals, I'm sorry, Parker's auditions. They have a, a very strict COVID plan in place, no more than five to eight kids auditioning at a time. Uh, the kids that are learning their, their kick lines and the, and the jazz ensemble or the, uh, is that what it's called? I'm sorry. In Parker's, it's the jazz.
Jazz dance.
Jazz dance, thank you. They are learning their routines by video. They're typically, they would come in and practice it. That's, they're not doing that. They're practicing it at home. And so, you know, I, and then when they are auditioning, uh, if they're waiting to audition, they're being distanced in the auditorium, which is obviously a big place. And they're all wearing masks, they're wearing masks during the auditions. So it's a small group of kids confined to one area of the building. And, and really, I just want to, I want to give our kids some opportunity. You know, I want them to be here in school. And again, I hope to do that, uh, pretty quickly after, after break. But I just think it's important to have some social interaction, uh, to have some ability, some outlet other than just sitting in their bedroom all day. And so I know it's, uh, sometimes not a popular answer amongst parents. And, and sometimes the perception is that extracurriculars and, and Parkers and sports are more important than academics. That is absolutely not the case. You know, and we, we did press a pause on extracurriculars. If we're seeing that it's, you know, COVID is impacting us from that standpoint, we'll stop it. I know that kids in basketball aren't wearing masks and they're sweating and rubbing on each other and, and, you know, setting the screens, playing defense or close to each other. You know, OHSAA, OHSAA has not suspended athletics. We can't unfortunately do basketball virtually. That's not possible. We can't have wrestling virtually. Um, so I want to give these kids that opportunity and that, that's why we're doing it. And I know again, it's probably for some, that's not a valid reason. We're trying to make the best, the best decisions we can, uh, that benefit our kids the most. And a lot of times it's the best of the worst decisions, you know, uh, quite frankly. So that's why. And yes, they will continue. We did put a pause on games until after the new year. For those reasons that you talk about, we know, uh, when we have our kids in our pods from a contact tracing, from a spreading standpoint, we know where the small group is going to be. When they start playing games, you know, that now they're intermixing with 10 to 12 kids from the other teams. And so that starts a little bit different of a spiral. We don't know where those kids have been. That's going to be an issue that comes up after the new year because we hope and anticipate to play games. You, you know, you practice to play. And, uh, so that is going to come and that's going to hit us. I know the question is, when, when our community and our parents, for some of them, when they watch the board meeting, they'll say, okay, you're bringing kids back full-time. How are you going to social distance? That comes at me every single time. And obviously when you have kids in full-time, you can't social distance six feet. You know, uh, six feet is best practice. I've said this before, Children's Hospital, the CDC, others have said, you know, three feet is okay, six feet is better. We will do our best to, to social distance when we can, where we can. Any school that is in full-time are, are in the same boat. They're not able to social distance. We will be, still be requiring masks. I think the research is out pretty clearly now that the, the worry of transmitting from surface to, to hand or surface-to-surface transmission is very, very slim. That's, you know, I, I was reading research on it today. That the CD, CDC even said it's, it, it is probably more rare than, they, they have evidence of the virus from sneezing, coughing, landing and living on a surface. But they don't have any evidence currently of it actually being transmitted by a kid, then another kid touching that surface and then contaminating their eyes or mouth or, or wherever else they're able to get it. There is no evidence of that right now. So the, the worry is less of the surface-to-surface touching and more of the, the air droplets. And, and you know, hopefully our masks and other protocols and the, the dust dividers, the dust shields will help us to protect everybody from that and, and we can stay in person for the rest of the second semester. That's the goal. We are, I want to mention this. I, I said this to Mr. Hartley today. This is something that we're, when, you know, Dr. Orso is out right now. But I'm going to work with Mr. Dreward and the rest of our administrators on. We're going to come up with an academic recovery plan. And, you know, I, obviously this first semester, there's been a loss of instruction. There's no denying it, no hiding it. You know, our kids are going to be behind where they were. And, and this academic recovery plan is really going to focus on math and English, language arts and reading at the elementary level. I don't know what that looks like yet. And, uh, you know, there probably will be a cost to that as well. So just giving the boards, a, a board a heads up on that, but we're going to have to be recreative. You know, in my mind, I'm envisioning, uh, summertime and, and, you know, as a big component of that. So we're going to work to develop an academic recovery plan to try to get our kids caught up as best as we can before going into next year. And, and it's going to be an ongoing process. We know that it's going to take, uh, probably a couple of years to get us caught back up to where we should be. But, um, just know that that is going to be the work of my administrative team as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Anything else for board discussion?
Yeah.
All right. We do not have need for executive session. So before we adjourn, I'll just say Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, whatever you celebrate. Give all of your family virtual hugs and enjoy your time off. So if I can have a motion for adjournment.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning tonight's meeting, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.